Yeah, welcome. This is the Nottingham Planning Board and it's Wednesday, February 10. My name is Dirk Rottenheis. I'm the Planning Board Chairman. And I wanted to just go over a couple of things at the beginning of this meeting. We'll have the Board members acknowledge, but initially I just want to have a statement here that in anticipation of the extension of the Executive Order 202017, the Nottingham Planning Board will hold a virtual meeting. The access to the meeting is given through Zoom. All Board, all members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen in and if necessary participate in the meeting. If you do have some issues with access through Zoom, the phone call you could have to Joanna is 679-9597. We are going to request that everybody with the exception of the Board members stay on mute until they are ready to be presented or are called on to present. We have various cases this evening. So in order of the agenda, we'll go through those cases in the order of the agenda as posted. Let me do a roll call of Board members to make sure that their equipment is working and that they can hear. So Ed Veale.
Present.
Gary Anderson.
Here.
Tyler Eaton. Ian McKinnon.
Here.
Susan Mooney. Robert Davies.
Here.
Leanne Gast.
Here.
And Tyler Eaton. I think, I think Sue just joined by phone. Dirk?
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay, great. And Tyler, can you just make sure that you take yourself off mute and then that you can say hi?
Sorry.
Nope, don't worry. Just wanted to make sure you hear us. You can go on mute. Members can go on mute. I just wanted to make sure that when the presenters have the ability to come back on or if Board members want to speak to just unmute themselves. And then people in the public and applicants, we will call on you and we get the point to in our agenda. I do want to seat, we have an open Planning Board seat at the moment. And we have all current members present, so I do need to seat one person for as an alternative, one alternative into the seat that's vacant at the moment. And I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I don't know whose turn it is, but I'll
We were both, we were both seated at the last meeting, so. Top of the coin.
All right. Buzz, you're it. And like usual, so I'll seat Buzz in that position and Leanne will remain the alternate. The alternate will have all discussion rights and input. Just not having a vote this evening. So when talking about the position, I do want to put it out at the beginning of the meeting that there is an open Planning Board seat available for public. Anybody who's interested in volunteering for that seat, contact Planning Office Joanna. And there are a number of other town seats on various boards. So I do implore the public of Nottingham to go out and volunteer as a civic duty, help our community. And it's better, betterment for yourself as well. So reach out to planning or zoning or somebody else you may know at the city or at the town and then express your interest. Thank you. Hey Sue, I think you're getting a little bit of feedback. Could you go on mute for?
I'll do that. It's my oven fan. Sorry.
Okay. So I'm going to start out the meeting with the public hearing. So this is a continued case number 20009 SUB, the application from Maryland and Jeffrey Cole requesting to subdivide 31.18 acres into six lots, two commercial lots on Route 4, one residential lot on Smoke Street and three residential lots on Canard Road. Canard is a scenic road. The property has frontage on Route 4, Smoke Street, Canard in Nottingham and is identified as Tax Map 6, Lot 16. This is a continued case, so from January 27. And I will turn to staff if you can just get us up to date on the status of what was expected for this meeting from the January 27.
Sure. So I believe the only updates as far as the last meeting that we had were that the applicant was invited to join the Conservation Commission meeting and that was on the 8th. So that was Monday, Monday evening. And they were going to get comments on their presentation from that as well as the Board requested a Natural Heritage Bureau review. And I believe that we have both gotten comments from the Conservation Commission as well as the Natural Heritage Bureau review. But I don't believe it made the material cutoff, so it's unclear whether we have staff and Board had time to review all of that.
Thank you. Yeah, I haven't seen the natural heritage. And I do know that we received a letter from the Conservation Commission. I guess I'm not, I haven't reviewed it yet because it just came in today. Maybe I'd like to just take a moment and even though we're in the middle of this case, state that, you know, we do need to have better deadlines and materials. We need to stick to the deadlines that we do have. We are a volunteer board, so when we receive materials a day or even the same day as a meeting, it doesn't give our Board members enough time to review it. So we do have deadlines for materials to be submitted 10 days prior to a meeting. So it's important that we receive that material to provide the applicants, you know, a timely review. So in the case of this, we're receiving material and I think there's another case on tonight where we received material. I think all three. We received materials basically within the past couple of days. We do have a deadline and that deadline is for a reason, is to give us time to review them. So we may not be able to get to those reviews, certainly not tonight. But again, it's a timeliness that's beyond our control. It's the applicant's responsibility to get those materials submitted on time. I guess I would, saying that, I do would like to hear maybe from Sue Mooney. She's the Conservation Commission representative. If you could talk to the letter that was drafted and submitted.
Yeah, yes, Dirk, I can do that. Unfortunately, the, the meeting that followed the last Planning Board meeting for the Conservation Commission was on February 8th, which was this last Monday. And we met with Mr. Hold on. Frankelwitz and he reviewed the application with us. And we had a long and informative meeting. And then on Tuesday, I wrote up the draft of our, of our findings, sent it out for review to the Commission members and gave them a deadline of 7:00 PM on Tuesday. And then I sent that out to Joanna after 7:00 PM asking her to forward that to all of you. But that's not really an adequate amount of time for everybody to read the letter, read our review and, and digest it. I can go through what our findings and recommendations are if you wish.
Um, yeah, verbally, if you could. I mean, that is, that would be helpful if you could do that.
Yes, yes. There were vegetative buffers, no cut vegetative buffers in a couple of the wetlands, but they were not all designated to, to have no cut protection. So we asked them to include all of those wetlands to have those 50 foot no cut. Let me see. All of the vegetative buffers around the wetlands be included in the Ds for the property owners to be. Use a rough mix for driveway paving, again for amphibians and reptiles. Determine that the culvert at the base of the shared drive for lots 2 and 3 will be adequate for the runoff, particularly because of the steep slopes involved. And schedule a sidewalk to include or to denote the steep slopes. We know that they are in excess of 25 feet, but we don't know how much in excess of 25 feet that is. Wetlands and possible other natural features like giant trees or, or whatever of the parcel as well as the impacts of subdivisions. So that was our, that was our findings and recommendations from our meeting with Mr. Frankelwitz on Monday.
Well, thank you. Did, was it, was a sidewalk meeting scheduled with the Conservation Commission? Or is that something a recommendation for the Planning Board to do?
The Planning Board by, by our local regs has to schedule a sidewalk and invite the Conservation Commission to attend as well.
Okay.
But with all, with all developments that impact natural resources such as steep slopes and wetlands, sidewalks should be a matter of course, so we can do our due diligence.
Yeah, I agree.
Just at the last meeting, we discussed a sidewalk and we, we pended it. There's some more information back from the CONCOM and, and other items, so.
Okay.
Hold on it yet.
And we did have a, some information come in from Natural Heritage. I guess. I haven't seen that yet, but. And go ahead, Sue.
Yes, I'm sorry to butt in. I'm good at that. Mr. Frankelwitz told us that he'd received a response from the Natural Heritage Bureau, but it wasn't very specific. It just showed the whole area was green because it was a possible habitat for up to six species species of interest in New Hampshire. And he was going to contact Kim Tuttle at the Natural Heritage Bureau for more definitive, definitive information on that.
Okay. I guess before I request from the applicant some additional information or to state, you know, some of this information. Does any Board member have questions or concerns?
Specific to the CONCOM review or?
Well, specific to, well, I guess let's, let's hear from the applicant about maybe just the Conservation Commission, your review, Natural Heritage. If you're, can unmute yourself, Mr. Frankelwitz and?
Yep, I'm unmuted.
Okay.
If I could share my screen, I'll show you the updated plans and then we can talk about the Natural Heritage and Fishing Game review.
Okay, yep.
You see that plan?
Yes.
So when we were at the last Planning Board meeting on January 27th, we talked about no cut zones and the plans that we submitted last week, 10 days prior to the meeting, we added the no buffer, no cut zones to most of the wetlands, anywhere that was kind of going to be building. One of them at the Conservation Commission that they requested, we add a buffer is this little wetland here. We're going to add that 50 foot no cut. And then they mentioned along the, the commercial zone. I like to just talk about that a little bit because we could add one here, but there's potential for somebody that buys that lot to build out back here. So we wouldn't want to add a no cut buffer along this entire buffer, maybe along here and leave that open in case somebody wants to build there. That was the buffer discussion with the Conservation Commission. And we talked about the driveway, the slopes and the Natural Heritage Bureau review. What's on the screen now is what we got back from NHB. And as you see on this map, there is, there's nothing directly on the site, but there's a couple of landing turtle sightings at the intersection of Route 4 and Smoke Street and Hall Road. Then about a quarter mile away down on Little River, there's been some sightings of a spotted turtle and American ale. And then somewhere over on a big tamposy conservation land in Barrington, there was some sightings of stuff. So when we got this, we contacted Kim Tuttle at the, at Fishing Game as requested. And she gave us some suggestions, but like she said in her first paragraph is if there's no state permit, they don't review them. They don't give you a thorough review because of limited staffing at Fishing Game. But she was kind enough to send this back and gave us some, some suggestions on what to put on the plans to address the turtles, which are closest to the site. And that's certain materials and the erosion protection, not using plastic. Gave us a type of erosion matting to note on the plans and to note on the plan set that there's been turtle sightings in the area.
Okay. Well, thank you. And it looks like that corner where the turtle, landing turtles were shown is basically within that power line easement that you're probably not doing
Right.
any disturbance to anyway.
It's, it was on the northern side of Route 4 and then just on the, on the southern side. So on the plans, that would be right here and over here.
Yep, okay.
This is Mr. Veale. I've, so the power line corridor, I don't know if that's a landing's corridor because I, I've encountered landings multiple times where these power lines cross Priest Road. It's sandy there and I've encountered them laying eggs in that section multiple years, multiple times. It's one of the few places I've seen a planning turtle in my life, besides my own road. So, so it seems like the applicant's trying to avoid, is trying to avoid and taking to best practices the, those areas.
Yep. Okay.
And I can go through a couple more things just to kind of bring the Board up to speed on, on where we are with everything.
Yep, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
So today we received the staff planning comments. There's really three left. One was a test pit on the commercial lot. We have to do an additional test pit to bring it within the 30,000 square feet. We'll, we'll get that done. Disturbing critical areas. There's a waiver we submitted and fortunately I did submit that today. It's for steep slope impacts. So there, there's two waivers on this project, steep slopes and then the driveway waiver that we're asking for. And then the planner's final comment was about the Fire Chief's comments and we just received those today as well. And he really had, he had three comments. One was that the houses be sprinkled, which will add that note to the plan. And then for Mr. Cole, it was the same as he did on Route 4 subdivision. He had to sprinkle those houses, so. And then the commercial lot along Route 4, he held comments and whenever the site plan for that comes in, he'll have comments, of course, and review that at that time. And then he agreed with approving the waiver for the waiver to 10% slope for a driveway. And on the Conservation Commission, I'll just go through what I have for comments. It's pretty much the same. We're going to add the notes to the plan for the driveway, the culvert size. We're proposing a 12 inches. The town requires as a minimum 30 feet long. And it says in the regs that consult the road agent. Of course, the Planning Board can, can tell us whatever size they want, but the road agent will also have a say in that. The scenic road, we do have to talk about that. There are no stone walls on our side of Canard Road, pretty much only down at the intersection of Smoke, Canard. There's a little bit that comes down Canard, but the rest of it is, is just trees and slopes going up into the site. Now I said NHB, Fishing Game, we get those comments and I forward those to the town and we're going to add the wetland buffer, additional wetland buffers to the plant. So at this point, I think probably scheduling the sidewalk, site visit, if you guys want to do that, is our next step.
Yep. We can do that. And I wanted to ask, I guess, any Planning Board members if they've got some comments on these revised plans that were submitted. I have a couple, but I can hold those until.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veale. I had a few. So the applicant knocked off one of those that the test pit. He's sort of going to be clarifying that. The, I have a question. Looking at this sheet here was one of my questions. So this sheet shows that proposal lot 16 2, I think it is. The one with the majority of the steep slopes there or maybe 16, 3, the one next to it. This one, yep. When you look at, at this, and then if you look at a few pages later where it actually shows that without the steep slopes, the contiguous area looks like it still includes all that area in there, which it should not. That's not part of the buildable area because it's unfit for buildings, for building. Let's see.
And we'll, we'll change that. I, I know it doesn't, doesn't include that area.
I just want to make sure, yeah. So you're, you're, I just want to make sure you still have enough contiguous area, basically. I think you were at 48,000. Don't want to think that that's 18,000 square feet of area, but I'd like to have that just cleaned up. And then sorry, I got that big plan. There was supposed to be a note about underground utilities. I don't think that's been added yet.
Yeah, confirm that.
Sorry, so Dirk or somebody else, if you want to jump in, I'll, when I find my other note on the plan, I'll touch on the other one.
Yeah, any other members have some comments or questions for the applicant?
My only comment is related to that driveway, that shared driveway. I did have a chance to drive by. Thanks for staking those out. Definitely that area, I think, as you mentioned, there will definitely need to be some coordination with the road agent because that side of the road, there's a depression, not really a ditch line. So just have to work that out. I would just, I just, I can see that, that area of card seems pretty susceptible to erosion. So as long as we have that provision there, that, that needs, the road agent has to be consulted for that design. I think that's important. That's really all I have right now.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stick with that theme. If you want to go to the sheet that has the driveway grading a little bit better shown. You have erosion control measures shown here. But the use of silt fence, I don't think is, is really appropriate. It's up gradient from the disturbance. And it's also perpendicular to the slope. So it's not really what a silt fence is meant to protect anything. So there are other measures that will help, but I think certainly something in as far as maybe a check dam down the, you know, down the swale of the culvert. And then I think there's better protection that's needed at the bottom, at the culvert where it runs to the west into where that existing culvert is. So to protect that, I think there should be some erosion control put in that low point through that ditch line, whether it's, you know, another check dam or, or something like that. I would I, I'd like to see something a little bit more robust to protect the roadway and culvert there.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and could you label the side slopes of this? I didn't see that, what those are, if it's 1 to 3, 1 to 4?
I believe 2 to 1 coming up.
2 to 1? Okay. And then I'm probably going to jump back to probably sheet 3 through 5 and in this, in somewhat of the cover sheet as well, but I think we need to be a little bit clearer in notes of purpose, what, what we're doing here. I mean, the, I know you've received a variance to allow residential in the commercial zone. But on this map, it shows that those lots are being changed to residential. Which ultimately, once the subdivisions approved, I think that would be the case, but it isn't the case until that's done. So I'm just a little confused on how we're labeling these. You know, with, with a variance. And we're splitting the, we're saying, okay, well, we're going to apply the residential agriculture setbacks, which I think is appropriate to those lower lots. I'm, I'm just, I mean, we're not actually rezoning these. I guess that's the point.
Right. We'll, we'll place the waiver, the variance notes and stuff. I'm not sure if we've got those on there yet or not, but we'll clearly state that the, the variance was to allow residential use within a commercial industrial zone.
Okay. Just want to make sure it gets clear. That's kind of clear on the subdivision plan going forward. And then we're in the lot label bubbles and things. If you can just make sure that you have, some of them just have residential. But if you can say residential agriculture, just because we don't have a straight residential zone. And I was curious, on the opposite side of the road on Canard and Smoke, are there driveways? And if so, if we can get those labeled.
Okay.
Just, just, you know, they don't have to be surveyed in, but just location of where they are. And that's the comments that I had at this point. Any other Board members with comments or? Ed, did you find what you were looking for?
Yeah, we already got it. It was one of the other items, so.
Okay.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the applicant staking out the proposed driveways. It was very easy to drive by and see those sightlines look good. Again, the, the one off Smoke Street slopes down. And then the shared driveway, proposed shared driveway is, you know, significantly up. But it was easy to see where those were and that's, that's really helpful on a, on a subdivision.
Okay. So at this point, I think if there's no other comments from the applicant or from the Board about, to the applicant, let's, if we can have a motion to set a date for a site plan, sidewalk. a site plan, site walk. Joanna, what are kind of open dates?
Open dates, meaning no meetings?
Uh, well, I guess, I mean, we can, I guess, let me just pull the board. I mean, what is the board's availability for site walk with snow?
As I say, at this point, I think it'd be helpful because of daylight hours and such. Like I have a weekend, I don't like to jump into anybody's weekend, ours or the applicant's, but I think just because of short daylight hours, it's tough to do with them after work.
True.
And Derek, just one other point, just because when I ran the meeting last time, I kept the public hearing open and continued because of the, we hadn't, we hadn't noticed this as a scenic road at the time.
Okay, yeah. In fact, let's, another comment I have for the applicant is, can you identify on this plan or another plan, maybe the driveway plan of trees that you would expect to remove? Just maybe, maybe just areas because that is a requirement on scenic roads that we authorize tree removal. So we can wrap that into this approval.
Just within the right of way, correct? That's all you want?
Yep, within the right of way.
And one other item, Derek, we mentioned, and I don't know if this has already been clarified or not, but so we don't lose sight of it. There was proposed, on Smoke Street, proposed easement to the town. I think that would have to just be a condition of approval that, because we can't, we can't accept that, that'd be the select board, I believe.
I think I missed that discussion. Why, why are we, why is there an easement?
As part of your regulations, you require if it's not 25 feet to provide a potential easement for expansion of the road at 25 feet off the sign.
Oh, okay, I see, I see what you're saying.
Just this one little area here that isn't 25 feet.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we've run into this very often. So I guess I'll have to just double check how that gets handled.
Yeah, it was on the last application last month, the two lot subdivision, there was some notes on that about a potential easement. I'm not sure how you handle in that application, but it had the same note.
Okay. We'll double check how that happens, to make that happen. It might just be by recording this and then having a separate easement document. Okay, so we've got the options of weekend, and more than likely Saturday, and eight, 8:00 AM or 9:00 AM.
Looking at Saturday the 20th, Mr. Chairman? Which would be the Saturday after this coming.
Yeah, that's, so Saturday the 20th.
Mr. Chairman, I can make 9:00 AM work on that 20th, really anytime in the morning.
Okay, Mr. Frankowitz, would that, would that be available?
No, that's fine.
To do, okay. So if I can get a motion to set a site walk for the 20th at nine o'clock.
So that we, Planning Board, schedule a site plan with the property owners for case number 20-009-SUB for February 20th at 9:00 AM?
Motion, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll say, just to clarify, Mr. Anderson said site plan, but we're all talking about site walk, just nitpicking, but make sure we're clear. But yeah, I'll make that second. It's Mr. Veal.
And just to notify, also, this is, this would be a public meeting, so public is invited to attend this as well. So let me turn to the board and just roll call who's here. Is Ed Veal?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
And Robert Davies?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so that motion carries. Let me open it also to the public, public and entertain any comments, new comments from, for this application. And procedurally, I guess I would make sure that you either raise your hand, put it in a chat, or if no one, hopefully Joanna will be able to identify if you have some comments, and then address those to the board. And we will request information Anybody from the public like to speak on this or have questions on, on this case? Okay, I'm going to keep the public meeting open, public hearing open, since we do have a site walk meeting. We'll just continue that along. Okay, well, then I'll end it for this case. We will then see the applicant out on the site, the 20th at nine o'clock.
I'd like to just point out a couple of things.
Sure.
Parking, which you may all know is the best park, best place to park is here at the intersection of Route Four and Smoke Street. There's a big, I don't know if they plow it, but that's, they got a gravel area there that we can get most of the cars. Of course, Canard Road is pretty tight, so. And then I think we're coming up on our 65-day clock on the 12th, if we should discuss that or not. It was on Steph's review letter.
Steph, could you just confirm that?
So, yep, that is, that is true, but along with the executive orders, the governor has suspended the timeline for applications. So we can continue, just to put a date on the calendar, but it's up to the board.
Yeah, well, let's, let's continue this to the next meeting. And Mr. Frankowitz, if you need a document from us of that order extending that, then...
I think just continuing it tonight to the next meeting is all we need.
Okay, let's continue it to the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. I move that we can continue case 20-009-SUB to Wednesday, February 24th at 7:00 PM.
My second.
Any other discussion? Ed Veal?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Okay. Chair votes yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the next case, which is 21-002-SUB, application from Ledge Farm LLC owned by Joseph Falzoni, requesting a seven lot conventional subdivision. Property's located on Guile Road in Nottingham and is identified as tax map 40, Lot 1. Steph, could you just go through, let me just pull up your comments. So this is the first time we're hearing this, so we do have to go through the acceptance of this application to make sure it's complete and meets our regulations to review the application. And trying to pull up your notes, Steph, did you have any comments about the, about the application materials?
I had a few quick comments. So this property that's proposed to be subdivided into seven lots is located on Guile Road. The applicant did come in on August 12th for a design review, where they discussed potential design with the planning board. I had a few comments just on layouts and such. There was a common drive that is requested to steep, or I requested that it stay to the common boundary line. I think the applicant will speak to that. And then buildable land in proposed Lot 1 seems to be split into two, so I just wanted to confirm that there was one building envelope, and that met the 30,000 square foot requirement, as well as I just wanted to point out that there is a burial area on the property. And then I had various comments on just notes and things to point out on the plan itself. Those I probably don't need to go through one by one.
So I guess, just trying to figure, I'm reading through your notes now. I mean, it appears that the material itself is all there. There's some details, though, right? So I guess I'm just looking for some recommendations on acceptance. And I will ask the board to if they've had a chance to review and feel if the application is complete so that we Hearing none? I would ask for a motion to accept the application, and we can discuss it.
Mr. Chair, it's Mr. Veal. I move that we accept the application for case 21-002-SUB as complete.
Second, second.
Motion and a second. Take a roll call vote on that. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Okay, chair votes yes. So that we now have this kind of in our hands. We also have to vote and consider if this is a development of regional impact. We do have to vote on that. It's kind of in the middle of town, seven lot subdivision. So I would entertain a motion either to, I guess, consider and determine whether application, whether it is or is not regional impact. And we can have a discussion on it. We'll probably have a discussion on this in the next case as well. Steph, you can maybe go through a little bit of what regional impacts are and the reasoning for them. If you could summarize that, that would be helpful.
Sure. The basic summary of a development of regional impact is that it impacts those that are not listed as butters. So if the board finds that there are going to be impacts that are outside of the town of Nottingham, and that they feel as though the proper audience is not here to discuss thoughts, then they could determine a regional impact. I would also say it is RSA, within RSA 36, I believe, that this is listed, and a simple Google search of New Hampshire Development of Regional Impact facts or handouts will bring you up more resources if you wanted to look into it more.
And so in this case, or any cases, it would be entities like in a budding town, Stratford Regional Planning Commission, even though they're on board with us here. It could be an organization, just if there is a regional impact that this board feels should be reached out to, and that means that a certified notification would go to those boards and, or agencies, and materials would be sent to them to review, and we would request comments back. And then we would, as the board, if we do request one, and this is for any application, if we do request one, we really need to state why, so that the reviewing agencies know what our concerns were and why we sent it out as a development of regional impact. But nonetheless, we do have to vote on those for every application. So in this case, if someone can make a motion, either to have a regional impact or not.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. I move that case 21-002-SUB is not an application of regional impact.
Okay, thank you. Any second? Was that Ian?
That was Tyler.
Tyler, thank you. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mrs. Chairman, this is Susan. I would just like to make a couple of points. The far end of Guile Road extends into Lee, and people that will be occupying these new homes on the Guile Road section that includes Nottingham, most likely will come up 152 and take a right and go down Guile Road through the Lee area. And also within the Lee area is that kettle hole bog that has been studied extensively as habitat for endangered turtle species. So I would recommend that as good neighbors to our neighboring town of Lee, that we open up the opportunity for them to have a comment if they so wish.
Yeah, we can always, we can always request that separately, that's not a regional impact. And we've often done that, too. You know, we can certainly request input from them. Just to remind everybody, it is seven lots.
Yeah.
So what we would, in roadway terms, that's not a significant amount of traffic beyond what the roads are designed for there. So that said...
Okay. Well taken.
Any other discussion from boards before call for vote? Okay. So the motion to not have this as a regional impact vote is for, sorry, missed my list here. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
I will abstain.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay. Then now we would ask that the applicant, I guess, do a brief presentation of what they have submitted.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott Polk and Veal's associates. Can everybody hear me okay?
everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So I'll just update the board, kind of give a recap of where we started this project and where we are today. If I could actually share my screen so we have a plan up that would probably be beneficial.
Yeah, please do.
Did I see that okay?
Yes.
So here, we're all playing here, so. We have actually come for the board, I believe this is the fourth time on this property for Mr. Fellzone. We originally started with a open space development of cluster lots that was heavily developed, that was quickly determined that was not favorable by the town. We think the 14 lot conventional subdivision with the cul-de-sac. And then as of late, we had come in for a design review on the plan you see in front of you, which is a seven lot conventional design of frontage lots. We have seven proposed lots, all over two acres in size, proposed with septic in well. Required 30,000 square feet of available area, which has been verified, that was a good question. It would, this project, after recommendation from the Concom and the planning board, at that time to go to the zoning board to request relief for wetland impacts solely related to the common driveways. We met with the zoning board, they reviewed the plan, we had a very good, successful walk with the site, planning board, excuse me, the zoning board and some other members, some of the butters had showed up. We went out in detail, the crossing locations, proposed driveway accesses, Jim Gold, the wetland scientist, gave a review on each site and explained the actual ecology in the wetland component of the crossings. We addressed all the concerns of the zoning board. And we had received on December 18th, the variance for the wetland impacts indirectly relocated to the driveway locations. So we do have the variance that was required deemed by the planning. There are two conditions of that. In these crossings, they are called eco-friendly crossing. This is a structure with an open bottom and a great top. This allows hydrology and natural critters to go through it, this is kind of a new thing coming to our area, has been used in Canada and other places in the US. And it works very good for sensitive areas. We are in communications with Kim from Fish and Game, who is actually reviewing this as we speak, we've been in communications with her and from Gold Environmental Office. We did receive commentary. As you would say it at the beginning of the meeting, and I just wanted to make a couple comments on that, if I can, to the review letter from the planning. Was that we did not have any requested waivers, there is actually a requested waiver that was submitted with the application, just so the board is aware. And I believe this is it here. We do have a seven lot conventional subdivision, however, we have already introduced what we thought would be required for drainage features to handle everything, which we have actually proposed also to Fish and Game and the Hampshire DES, we're providing dry swales, bioretention swales on the downhill side of the driveways and stone drip edges for all of the rooftops. So that being said, that's basically what would be required if we did a full drainage analysis anyway, so we are requesting a waiver for full drainage analysis, which would, the end result would be the same. So we did actually request that waiver from the planning board, we should have been in the packet.
Okay, thank you.
So as I said, for the project itself, we have four proposed driveways, lot one will have its own, and that will be in the location of the existing gravel access as it stands now. We understand there was a little confusion to the labeling of the lot, there is only one building envelope, and that would be on the northeast corner of the lot, we simply put the label on the left side because that was the clearest spot to do so. We have no.
Can you just point to that one with your cursor or something?
Certainly, so if you go to lot one. Actual building envelope was on the east side over here, this is a building area based on setbacks, however, there would be no way to get to it, and we do not anticipate or propose any building in that area. So this label is actually for this area here, it's just, it wasn't as easy to read, that's all.
Thank you.
As I said, there's four, four driveways, one for lot one on its own, and then we have a common for two, three, four, five, six and seven. As I said, we walked these with the zoning board and have approved those designs and locations. One of the commentary that came up from the planner in the comments was a possible need for relief of a variance of a driveway not on the common line. We had anticipated, due to the fact, they have reviewed this onsite, the same exact plan that's in front of you was in front of them when we got the variance. So in direct relationship to the wetland impacts were the driveway locations, which they approved. So we were under the assumption that we had, we had already taken care of that task, and I guess that's a question for the planning board this evening.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll look back into the, either the minutes or the actual language of that waiver, just to make sure that it's straightforward, that those were covered, that's all.
Great, now that's exactly what we were hoping, so, I mean, other than that, it's very straightforward. Again, you know, they're regular conventional lots. We've done everything that we think would be required for this, we tried to appease all the butters and other board members, and I'll answer any questions I can.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll open it up to the board members for any comments or questions, concerns.
I have, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of things I'd like to run through, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please.
So I'll kind of just run through these, most of them pertain, you can actually see them on this sheet, so it works out. The first one is related to the burial area. I know there was a, I guess a formal study completed. I know I haven't reviewed that, but how will that area, you know, it's clouded on the plans, how will that area be marked? And was there a recommendation or a need to demarcate that so it's not disturbed when they buy the homeowner? I just didn't know if there was any recommendation to that, and if there was an easement recommended or required. Couple of mine have already, we're handling Steph's comments on this sheet, I just couldn't tell what the scale was, I think it needs to bar scale. And to that end, it's a little hard to see the detail around the wetland crossings. I guess my worry is that I know we, obviously I can see there's some contours and such. I guess my worry is that if somebody were to take this plan and try and build a driveway off of it, it would be hard to do so, so I don't know if there's an intent in the future to provide more detailed crossing plans that would be used by these homeowners, but I didn't know if there was a possible need for another sheet just showing just those crossing areas in more detail. Let's see. And then my last one is related to the stone drip edges. I like that you guys are doing the recommending or requiring the use of the bioretention dry swales and the stone drip edges. My only thing with the stone drip edges is if we could possibly add some annotation that below those exist natural uncompacted soils, just because I think they can, it's fairly common that sometimes, based on how the house is constructed, that soil gets compacted and sometimes non-native, and it's just doesn't act as such, so, just a small detail, but ensures those systems work. So that's all I got, but the only thing is I'm just curious how that burial, burial area is, has to be handled.
Yep, if I may, those are actually very good points, Ian, thank you for bringing it up, I meant to actually bring up the cemetery issue, that's been a long ongoing one. Joe is also online, Joe has worked actually with the Division of Historical Resources, he has worked with the state that have been on site, they've used their specialized x-ray equipment, been all over the location where the possible cemetery was supposed to be. There is a a Division Historical Resources approval that actually was received today, I didn't expect the board members to read that, but I did send it to the planning board just so they have it. So basically, in short, they have researched the entire area with specialized equipment, have not found any headstones or remnants remaining from that burial whatsoever. So the state has basically said that they have, Joe has gotten a clean slate, however, they have required upon excavation of the site, they will have representative there on site to make sure that there, number one, is nothing found, number two, somebody needs to have the experience to do if the time, something is found. So at this point in time, the state has basically said, we've done what Joe has done, I should say, everything that he has possibly required to do to find a historic burial ground, which is, they have not found any evidence of, but have required stipulations in the event something is found. So that's basically the, the extent of where we stand on that one. The crossings themselves, yes, as you can, and I know it's hard to see at that scale, I apologize, we do have a full wetland impact permit. That has actually eight and a half mile elevens, that has profiles of the driveways that show the cover, the widths and everything like you're requesting, and I will certainly forward that to the board, and I didn't realize.
Yeah, if you can just send a copy, that'd be great.
Yeah, those are very detailed plans, I will forward to you. And then the stone drip edges, that's a good point, because when they're compacted, they obviously don't infiltrate very well, so.
I know it's become an issue for AOT over the years, so it's just something to consider.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other board members comment?
Yes, I just had two points, Mr. Chairman. One, that Guile Road is a scenic road. And so I would expect that there would be some, you know, looking at trees and or stone wall edges as such. And the only other question I had was that I see that there is a, an old foundation, existing foundation, didn't know what the plan might be for that, if any.
Certainly. That's the first comment, we had investigated that early on, and it was found that section of Bow Road is not seen.
Okay, I stand corrected, I wasn't, I was actually wondering that myself.
Yeah, no, that's fine, and then the existing stone foundation is a historic feature, that's to remain and to be not disturbed per the DHR requirements.
Thank you.
This is Mr. Veal, so the plans that are on the screen are a little bit different than what we had available to us online. Because like the buildable areas aren't shown on the plans online for other square footage that's in them, but there's a couple, a couple that are on here that are proposed, that I'm trying to confirm how, how wide the contiguous area is, because in our, in our definition of a contiguous area for a buildable lot, the 30,000 square feet is supposed to be, you know, nowhere is less than 50, 50 feet wide, and it looks like some of these are pretty tight. But maybe it's, maybe it's, maybe they're not so tight after all, and like, you know, proposal lot three right there, you know, that contiguous area, that bottom, I don't know what's being counted towards the contiguous area basically on proposal lot one, proposal lot three, you know, with the broken off sections, so the sections where there's, you know, a boot shape and such.
Yep, Mr. Veal, let me go back to the plan I was on, and I do recall you saying that at the design review, the areas that are close to the 50 feet, lot one makes it, that one survives, there was an area. You see this very skinny dashed hesitant line there? That's one in lot three, that's where the 50 stopped, same, or there's one here, that's sub 50 feet, and same lot five here, that's sub 50 feet, and six doesn't have any.
So does that mean, so does that mean?
They're not mathematical, so we didn't put them on the boundary plan?
Yep.
But those are the limitations of what we use for the area.
So for example, like, and thank you for clarifying that for, for that lot. Three, four, five, so is that area that's below that dash line, then not, not included in your?
Not counted as buildable area.
Okay, so the, the total for that 40,000 square foot is just, is everything above that?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, these are.
As you can see.
So it's.
It'd be quite a bit bigger if it was, so, yeah. Yep.
And the same thing with the, you mentioned that, that's good there, okay, this, that helps quite a bit, I appreciate that, and is any buffer proposed around that, that burial ground? Or required by the state, I didn't see anything in our regs specifically that requires buffer, but.
Yeah, not at this time, like I said, they, they use their x-ray and there was, there was basically no artifacts found. It could be, I don't know if it's bad records or not, but they have reserved the right in case something is found, and then, and then it'll be a case by case basis.
Yeah, I too had, I just wanted to reiterate some of the clarity of that one plan that you did have. Just as much as you can clean this, the plan up so it's readable, be helpful. I just didn't know if you were using sheets two through four, those are what, why you had the sheets two through four in there, that seemed like a better place to show this information.
As far as what, Mr. Chairman?
Well, those were 60 scales, and this is, you know, 100 scale, so it would be a little bit clearer to show it on the 60 scales. I guess I'm not sure what, what is the purpose of sheets two through four?
Well, those have been recorded boundary plans for the registry, this one is the site plan, so this would, would obviously not get recorded.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just to go back on one other item about the variance in the shared driveway, so for history, we have sent applications that, that indicated a shared driveway that was off the common boundary, we have sent those to zoning before for relief. Reading the notice of decision, the variance language or the variance that was granted was strictly in regards to the area of the wetland impact, had nothing to do with driveway location, so by reading of it, that was not, relief from that specific part of the zoning ordinance was not granted or requested.
Okay.
And maybe that's where we should have with our, with the ZBA or the building inspector on for future things to avoid sending applicants back multiple times as to how much, what their scope of review can, can include when they're, when they're acting on a variance as opposed, you know, if, that they should be acting on the letter of the variance specifically saying, well, the only thing that's requested was the wetlands, so here you go. But knowing that really, you know, there's additional part of the zoning that should have been acted on at the same time.
Yeah, and I mean, we can act on waivers at any point during the application process, review process.
Waivers, yes, but problem is this is a variance, because it's in the zoning ordinance. So we don't have, we don't have a waiver process built in for that?
See, it seems like a little bit of a confusing issue, we've never gone to the ZBA for a a relief for a wetland permit for a driveway, so compared to this, it was a little different, so, but in meeting with them and realizing all the detail that we did go over with them, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have approved the wetland impact location if they didn't approve the driveway location at the same time, so that's why it's, it's kind of, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, I mean, it makes obvious sense here, because it's the shortest, you know, wetland impact crossing, if you had it on the joint. If you had it on the, the joint boundary, then it's going to be longer, more wetland impact, you know, so this is, this is the correct place to put it. But what we'll do is we'll go back to the zoning board just to get some clarification. We'll, we'll do that internally and just make sure that that's, that gets covered.
Thank you.
Yep. And one more, I'm just, since we have this, this green still up and I apologize for not catching this one earlier. Mr. Cole, you, you showed the, the dash lines for the 50-foot sections on some of the lots. The one that does have the shared driver for six and seven, I think it is. Is that, do you have a similar area on this one? For lot six? I, I just, it's hard to tell.
I did, I don't think so, just because it's so large. Um, I could certainly add one. I, I think it was just, it's so big, it doesn't, I mean, you might lose maybe 10,000 square feet, but I will look at that.
I was just wondering if it's like that, basically the area above that, um, see where you're, like, where the driveway kind of terminates, is it?
Yes, it'd probably be right there, correct. Yeah, so it'd just be this little triangle that would be included.
Okay.
Right where.
Again, the lots are large, so it's, the scale is uh, when you look, is all the tough to tell how much, how much of that is, is there, so.
Yep, no, I get it. So lot six.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Joe Falzoni. Could I just add something?
Yes, please.
We were asked to not only, uh, when we went out with the ZBA, and Joanne can testify to this. We put stakes every 50 feet. I sent Doucette out there because they wanted to show completely where the driveway went. So it was all staked out all the way to the crossing, from the road all the way in. So they knew exactly where the driveway was going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll just get a clarification from them. I'm pretty confident that that's acceptable. Uh, any other board members with comments or questions before I open it up to public?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Susan. Yes, if I may?
Please.
I would um, like to direct the board to a letter that was dated October 20th, 2020, um, in which we had entertained Mr. Falzoni on this very particular property. Um, at, at that time, it was noted as case 20005DR, but now it is not. And um, he presented the two possible designs for this property, a 14 lot or a seven lot. And on review, the, the entire commission was very favorable for the seven lot subdivision because even though there would be wetland crossings, there would be less impact overall because there would, there would be no um, additional impervious surface um, um, with an internal driveway that would, that would impact um, runoff to the wetlands. So unanimously, we supported the seven lot subdivision to, to um, those um, features. We were um, impressed with Mr. Falzoni's proposal to put echo passages on the shared driveways to allow a facilitated passage of wetland species. And um, we are grateful to him for including that. He also said that he would put into the deed for lot seven, a restriction that would prevent further subdivisions if the abutting lot is to be subdivided in, in the future to prevent any road that would come in from an abutting lot that would pass through lot number seven.
Okay.
So if we include that letter from the commission dated October 20th, 2020 into the minutes for tonight, just to remind everybody um, of the history and the review of the conservation commission, we would be very grateful for that.
Yeah, I agree. I think we've, uh, we've, we've seen this as Mr. Cole presented earlier on, uh, many iterations of this. And um, throughout the process, this is a much preferable, I think, to everybody. So appreciate the work that went into doing this.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Leanne. I just had one question about the, the cemetery.
Yep.
You said you turned in a report recently that gave the clearance for it. Does it show where they did the, I assume they did the GPR, ground penetrating radar? Does it show in the report where they did that on the property?
Uh, can, can I respond to that? I was on site?
Yes.
Uh, we, uh, I'm forgetting the gentleman's name, but Scott probably knows. We hired a PhD professor from uh, the university who did our initial historic study. Uh, he spent a couple of days out there based upon the deeds. Keeping in mind that this is going back to the 1700s when it describes the distances. And Guile's Road was not in this location at that time. It was behind the house. And he consulted with the state and the state recommended a firm, and I can't remember the name, but I got their bill today, uh, who specialized in finding cemeteries. And they spent three days out there with equipment, stripping the areas very carefully down to just where they took the topsoil off. Because they said historically what happens is when someone dug a grave, they mix the soil and they spot the graves by the change in color of the soils. And then they use a shovel to go around. So they dug in five or six locations, some areas 200 feet long by 400 feet wide. And they just kept laying these strips day after day and they'd consult with the state. So finally, the state signed off and said, we've done everything possible to find it. But they're happy that, and I know someone brought this up tonight, no homeowner is building these crossings. I'm building all the crossings. I'm putting the eco passes in so that they're put in right. They're giving a course to the one firm that I hired to put these in to how to spot if they come across a grave when they're doing the driveways or the foundations. They're actually teaching them an onsite course. If they find something that's suspicious, they have to stop all work and the state has to come down along with the firm uh, that does this uh, out of Portsmouth. But we, we dug out there for days and found absolutely nothing.
Okay, and that, is that in the report too that they turned in to show where all they covered?
Yeah, if the sign off that came in today reiterates what the state agreed to about the contractor when he's out there. Because we don't know where to put limits because we haven't found anything. And this, this was more time consuming than using the penetration because we actually did the digging. We, we actually stripped all the soil off. If you go out there, well, you can't right now, there's snow. We dug the whole front of the site. Uh, and again, they, they explained to me, it was really a, a, very educational that when the, when the graves got dug back then, they were laid always on an angle so that if someone sat out, this was the religious thing back then, they would be in, in a certain direction. And that's where they looked for all these changes in soils and they couldn't find anything.
Okay, yeah, it's just surprising because we have several sources that um, indicate that they're buried there.
Yeah, and they've got all that. And they measured it out with compasses and with everything to track. I'd love to find it. I don't want to go through this. The lots are so big, there's only, they're estimating if it is on this site, they got enough information to say that it was only approximately 12 graves. So it's not going to be a big area, they said, if and when we ever find it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, appreciate the due diligence in that for sure.
Well, you may not recall because you weren't on the board. But 20 years ago, out on Route Four, I had 350 acres. I sold one of the lots to the builder. He was building his driveway. He hit a wooden casket that had a glass face where your head would sit because that was the way they used to do it. And guess who had to pay to remove it and take it to a cemetery? The state made me pay for it.
Oh dear.
All right, let's uh, get to any other board members and then get to the public.
Mr. Chair, I have uh, two quick comments, uh, if you don't mind. Um, I missed this one. Uh, we do in our subdivision rigs have the recommendation that lots should generally not exceed the three to one. It looks like quite a few of them do. They're much longer and narrow. I don't think it's a requirement of subdivision, but it's a, a recommendation. And then will there be driveway easements needed? Um, or will that be handled via the text in the deeds?
There will be driveway easements required and those will be put in the deed, yes.
I didn't know if they were going to need it to be depicted on the plans or if they're going to just be descriptive deeds.
No, they will be actually put on the plan with math.
I think Ian, these, these lots, you know, exceed the two acre minimum. And so, you know, in that case, they're, they are larger. Um, yes, the ratio still stands, but um, still quite a bit of land in between them. So they're not, you know, hourglass shaped or that's my opinion. Any other board members? And I'd like to open it up to the public if any public has comments. Please uh, state your name uh, and the comment that you do have. Okay, anybody recognizing a hand up or anything like that, just shout it out. I don't have the full screen with everybody on it and I will try and put that on. Steph or Joanna, any comments in chat or anything like that?
I'm not seeing anything within the chat and I am not seeing anybody using the raise hand function on the Zoom screen.
All right. So I'll, let me call for a second time to see if there's anybody interested in making comment from the public. And a third time seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I guess it's, it's really up to the board at this point. Do we have enough information? Do we want revisions made? Uh, do we have conditions? Do we have a conditional approval enough or?
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. Just one more thing. Um, if that can, can just clarify, for the, the very first lot, it looked like it used to be a U-shaped driveway going into that. I don't know if that's going to continue or if, if one of those portions will be closed off. And then where is the proposed driveway to actually access the uh, the upper portion of where the buildable area is?
The proposal right now is to, it'll basically discontinue uh, the western side of that. So there's no need to go around the old foundation. Uh, and then the right side uh, will be an extension of the proposed driveway so you can go straight up through to the buildable area.
Okay, so that would go through, what, and I understand the testing that's been done, but that would go through that um, possible cemetery area, which you know, is, is there a way to avoid that with, without, you know? I don't know if the, the western part of the driveway, if that would make more sense to use that piece and go up or if that gets you too close to the wetlands and then uh.
That was our theory. Um, I think the right also has a little bit better sight distance.
Yeah.
Um, I think what we could, you know, we could request is that, I mean, if I were to buy that lot, I would probably try to keep the standard trees for privacy. So they could come in where it is now, fit between the trees and the buffer here, and then come over by the well.
Okay.
Because they're going to have a water line anyway. I think that would be the best case scenario.
Okay, yeah, so I don't know if that's notated anywhere right now about that, uh, that that western part will be a bit, you know, would be, would go away because we generally don't want two, uh, two entrances within that distance. So that's, that's great.
No, we can know that.
Thank you. So Mr. Chairman, I, at this point, I'll think we can, I wouldn't feel comfortable uh, approving, you know, with conditions until we get some clarification if, if any other variances are required or if that variance that was granted encompasses enough um, to just, you know, clean up all, all the items there.
Okay.
Yep, I would agree.
If I may request, um, there is a waiver on, on the table. Drainage analysis?
Yeah, let, let's, let's act on that. Um, you know, based on the limited amount of uh, impervious area in, included here, my opinion would be that drainage analysis is not necessary. Um, but I'm going to leave that up to planning board members. Uh, so let's, if I can have a motion on the waiver.
Sure, I'm just pulling up the language of it so I can read it for you.
Well, Mr. Veal's pulling that up. I would agree. I think uh, the use of the bio swells uh, really helps alleviate really any concern with that um, runoff.
Well, does anybody have that on the screen that they could share the screen? I don't see it in the application. That's online right now, but it could be there somewhere, but I know, I know I saw it. Ah, here we go. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So it's Mr. Veal. I make a motion that we approve the waiver um, for case 21-002-SUB to request uh, from Article 10 of the subdivision regulations, section 10.3. To, I'll just read it. Uh, approve the waiver as written. Um, yeah. Yep. Any seconds?
Okay.
Gary?
Yes.
Any discussion? Okay, for approval of that waiver, granting that waiver, uh, roll call vote for Ed Veal?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
And chair vote yes? So that waiver's granted? Get that one out of the way. So then we would look to uh, continue this to uh, the next meeting um, so that we can get clarification from the zoning board.
Mr. Chair, at what point should we consider uh, if a site walk is needed for this? Uh, do we need to wait for that?
Thank you, Ian.
I figure we can schedule that now, uh, while we continue it?
We already, we already had a site walk.
But that was with the GBA, Joe.
Oh, okay. I like lots, I might need.
These are all staked out currently already, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The driveways.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we couldn't do that as a joint site walk because of the uh, we hadn't acted on the application yet. So we couldn't legally pull the site walk at that point, so.
Uh, uh, let me, let me just question what uh, we would gain from having a site walk at the planning board level since these wetland crossings are already determined, driveway locations are determined.
True.
I, I'm just asking the board, I guess. What benefit is the site walk?
I mean, I'm fine with, if everything's staked, I, I mean, I could go either way, really. I mean, I think I could drive by myself if that's, I know it's always a favor to not have to schedule it. Um, I just know with some of the concern around the burial stuff, it might just ease some people to actually walk the site, but.
Well, I, I guess what, what are they going to find? I mean, the, the applicants provided probably. I mean, the applicants provided probably, you know, a very expensive study and they haven't found anything. So us kicking some leaves around, I'm not sure is going to do much good. Sorry to be argumentative, but you know, I want to make sure the due diligence is, is, you know, here. But if, if we can do a timely site walk prior to their next scheduled meeting, then and board members would like to do that, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I mean, I, there's nothing, I mean, I'm fine with going to walk it myself. I think that's generally acceptable, correct?
Well, I also think it sends a good message to the neighborhood that the planning board and the conservation commission are looking out for everybody's best interests. If it's nothing more than that. I myself have seen the property as a private citizen and I have no problem. But I think as representatives of the town of Nottingham, we need to be a presence for our residents. And just let them know that we're doing our job on their behalf.
Okay, so if, if someone would like a site visit, they can make a motion and we'll vote on it.
One more question for Mr. Cole or Mr. Falzone. Are the, are the proposed driveway locations, are they currently staked? Is where those come onto the guile?
Yes. We also put a stake like around 20 feet off the edge of pavement because we didn't want people pulling them out. And that's your starting point. Scott, I can't remember what color they are because there's various flags out there. So you need to know you're following the right colored flag to the crossing.
Yeah, I believe the sideline flags were red. And then for each crossing, I believe, they staked both sides of the wetland, I believe, in orange. And for the record too, I can say that during our site walk with the zoning board, the majority of their butters actually were there. They did like the site walk we had. So I know the majority of them, they were happy and they did see the site already.
So we have a date that we can look at?
Can we do it on that same Saturday at one hour after the previous one?
Or maybe an hour and a half? 10:30?
Sure.
Okay.
I can make both dates.
Mr. Veal, I realize I actually have a prayer commitment on that Saturday. So I most likely will not be able to make these, but that should not be the determining factor for everybody else.
Okay.
I did have a question for Mr. Falzone.
Yes.
Yeah, I know you had mentioned that we probably wouldn't be able to see anything around where the digging had been, had happened for the burial or prospective burial sites. So is there, are there any markings for that or not?
No, because they're massive, but you know what I could do? I can supply Joanne with the report that the Portsmouth Specialty Company in graveyard research did with their maps and locations and certifications. So you can see the extent of what they did.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, if there was no snow on the ground, you could easily go out there and see it because there's no grass in any of those areas. But I'll forward the report to Joanne along with the approval that came in today, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So then let's set a meeting up for site walk meeting October 20th at 10:30?
October?
I'm sorry. I wrote October, yeah. No, no, not October, Mr. Falzone, not October.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that, that even though I won't be there, that we hold a site walk on February 20th, Saturday, February 20th at 10:30 a.m. And then, Mr. Falzone, I shouldn't have made this before I made the motion. Where's the best spot? Or Mr. Cole, where's the best spot for people to meet since that's obviously a pretty long stretch of road?
I can send a plow truck and plow that parking area where we all park soon.
Yeah, that'd be great.
The existing east side driveway, Mr. Veal.
Right.
The one we spoke of earlier.
Lot one? With the cellar hall?
Yep.
Perfect, all right. So to clarify my motion, I move that there'll be a site walk February 20th, 21th at 10:30 a.m. With everybody to meet on proposed lot one.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion about it?
The only thing, Mr. Chairman, is that we just have a chat and there was a question of is this walk open to the public?
Yes.
True, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, all, all site walks from the planning board are deemed as meetings and those meetings are open to the public. So if people are interested in coming to that site walk meeting at 10:30 on the lot that's has an existing house or cellar hole on it, it'll be plowed out driveway. Let me go through the roll call to vote. So Ed Veal?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. And now if we could have a motion to continue.
What is our next meeting?
2:20. After that. Is that enough time?
So that would be, any revised plans by the 14th or? To 10?
Yes, 10 days.
So that doesn't work.
We can get the revised plans in on time.
14th is Sunday, right?
We can give him to Monday.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to continue case 21-002-SUB to the February 24th meeting at 7:00 p.m. with revised plans provided to the board on February 15th, Monday, the 15th.
A second.
Okay, any other discussion? Just have a vote.
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Will Joanne reach out to the ZBA for that clarification for you?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I actually have a question, Joanna, are you working on Monday? Does president stay, I don't know.
I'm not supposed to be, but I'm working from home for the foreseeable future, so.
Will the town hall be open for deliveries?
That is not open.
We can get them in on Tuesday.
Sure.
I'll amend my motion to February 16th for deliverables.
A second.
All right, I'll vote. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So that case will be continued and we will see you not in October. See you this month. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep, good night.
So next on the public hearing case is number 21-003-SIT. It's an application from Tammy DeFrancesco, trustee of Cabota Trust, requesting approval of a water cross event to be held three times a year, starting in 2021. Property is located at 21 Raymond Road in Nottingham, identified as tax map 69 lots eight and 10. We've received an application. And we have gone through with some, some comments on that application. I was just going to pull those up. Okay, Steph, I'm pulling up your review. I just didn't see anything on the completeness acceptance. Has this been reviewed yet?
Yes, I have reviewed it. The only comment I would have on completeness, do you want me to go ahead and?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Um, the only comment I had was that lot 6910 does abut the town of Raymond. They, the town itself was not noticed as in a butter. And that is something I went back and forth on for when reviewing RSA 67453. So I did reach out to the planning staff and the town manager to just give them a heads up, but I have not heard back yet. So I do not know if, if they've seen that.
Thank you. So this similar to the previous application and all applications we have to vote for was the development of regional impact. But before we get to that, we, we do need to accept this application as complete and appears the material is there. If board members have comment about the acceptance, let me know. If we're comfortable with that, then I can make a, have a motion that's accepted, complete.
To accept case number 21-003-SIT as the application as complete.
Second.
Tyler? Any other discussion?
No, I'm not fine with that. This is Mr. Veal, just obviously with the application and notice of butters. Knowing that we have to make sure that Raymond is legally noticed at some point before we have final, next, final action on the plan.
Yep. Okay, so we'll vote for completeness. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So we've accepted the application. We do have to consider whether this is has regional impact. And as we stated before, if we do feel it has regional impact, we need to state who it needs to, you know, who we feel needs to be notified, be involved with that. And, and reasons why we feel it's an impact. What we want them to take a look at.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. I don't know if it's possible, if anybody has it up, Steph, Joanna or yourself, the OSI verbiage of the RSA that kind of helps give the six items that list some of the things that should be considered for, for when we have a vote on regional impact or not.
Yeah, I don't have the list handy, but you know, it's traffic. It's, you know, noise, it's air pollution, it's those are the, I guess, the ones I remember.
Right there.
Oh, great. Yeah, so the size of the dwelling units, it's a development of regional impact. We have to have these for votes for every application, even though this is a site plan. And, and even at that being a site plan, this is an event that happens three times a year. So it's not a development in itself. There's no construction that's happening. So it's a little, little different, but it is the, so these six items here, on the size and number of the dwelling units, proximity of borders to neighboring community, transportation networks, anticipated emissions such as light, noise, smoke, odors, particles in proximity to aquifers or surface waters, which transcend municipal boundaries and shared facilities such as schools and solid waste disposal facilities.
So, so reading through that criteria and then later on, there's some additional verbiage. This, this proposal meets a few, a number of these. Number four, with potential noise. Number five, this sits on an aquifer. And then proximity to borders of neighboring community. It's abutting Raymond and it's within a couple hundred feet of the Epping border. So it abuts two other municipalities. And when you read the verbiage of this further down, it states that when it's a close call, the law requires the board to find that the development does indeed have the potential for regional impact and doubt concerning regional impact shall be resolved, shall be resolved in a determination that the development does have potential regional impact. So basically, it's, what this law was created, when you read this note, was to record, you know, to give neighboring communities and butters notice and to make sure that they have a chance to, to comment.
Okay, any board members have comments?
Chairman, I would agree with Mr. Veal. He kind of hit on the same points as me. The fact that I think, you know, I know we've seen some letters. There's definitely, with Raymond being, I guess, direct to butter, I would argue that it would be qualified.
This is Susan, Mrs. Lee. Also, the Epping properties that abuts this application, I believe, is in conservation. So that particular preserved property would be impacted by the noise and the traffic and, and all of that as well.
Who's the, who's, who's the owner or steward of that parcel, I guess?
I, I don't know. I'd have to go online and look it up.
Okay.
But.
According to the plan, southeast Land trust, south.
Yeah, they're open holders.
Okay. So we would include them.
Yeah, yeah. So definitely, we, our neighbors need to be included.
Okay.
Yeah, we would want, we would want them to give us the same courtesy if it, if it was in their town.
Definitely.
Okay, well, from the feedback, it sounds like we should vote for this to be a regional impact. If there's a motion that could be made.
Mr. Chair, I move that case number 21-003-SIT be determined to be an application of regional impact.
Second.
Second from Gary?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yep, Mr. Chair, Mr. Veal again. I know on a prior case, you had mentioned that if we do determine that it has regional impact, that we're supposed to kind of outline some of that to make it clear. So when we send notification to the neighboring communities and the appropriate. kind of outline some of that to make it clear. So when we send notification to the neighboring communities and the appropriate regional planning commission, they know why.
Yeah.
So do you, do you need us to, I mean, I know we touched upon some, you need additional verbiage for that?
I don't think so. I think we just point out the three or so that you did. And I, I'm not sure that there's others there, but I, I think primarily it's those the noise impacts or
Yeah, it'd be noise, aquifer, municipal borders, the transportation network being that prior traffic coming in from 101 Raymond. And then possible municipal items of, of police and fire response, since this is much closer to their responding units than it is to ours.
And traffic.
Right, and I don't know if it was stated in that OSI. But once we, if we do vote that this is a regional impact, we, we have to continue the meeting until those agencies or butters are notified. So we will not be able to continue anything with the application until that's done.
Have we determined whether this is just Raymond or we're going to include Epping in this?
Well, that's a good discussion. I'm, I, I think both if, if they're that close.
Yes, yes.
And then, you know, who, who would be the agency for the aquifer protection, just to give them a notice? I don't know if that'd be DES?
Could that just be mentioned to both municipalities, assuming that the aquifer extends into possibly both municipalities as well?
Yeah. Okay.
Is, Mr. Chairman, is there any way, can we hear from some of the public before we do this vote or?
No, we can't, unfortunately.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we can't proceed to the public hearing until we, we have all of the butters notified. That's, that's what the RSA has. So in, in any of these cases, if we do vote for regional impact, then we have to halt the meeting after that and then wait for, continue the meeting until we properly notice those other agencies, entities. So let's, we haven't, let me take a vote on that. That this would be regional impact with the elements highlighted that Ed did and that would go to Epping Raymond. So a call for a vote on Ed Veal?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Chair vote yes. So at this point, we would then need a continuance. But we have to have the proper time for those notices to go out. So I'm not sure that this, that putting it to the 24th, Joanna, that we wouldn't be able to get notices out in time for that meeting. So we would continue it to the meeting after that.
And Joanna did
Pretty full anyway.
Joanna did point out that, um, that because of the, the push on the elections that our March schedule has changed. Where originally we, we, you know, are limited based on our election of officers and, and everything after town meeting. So I think Joanna, I know you sent a revised, is the, is the calendar that's online updated or probably not?
It's updated.
Cause, yeah, right now, right now, it showed that the first meeting would be March 17th. That's would have been the no business election of officers and the second one would be March 24th. But March 10th is actually the second Wednesday of, of March. So is that actually our, our first meeting date?
I apologize. I thought it had been updated. The 10th should actually be our, our next meeting, March 10th.
And I'm assuming at this time, we probably have nothing on our agenda for that meeting.
Correct. We do not have anything on the agenda.
So is that Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we continue case 21 dash 003 dash SIT to March 10th, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
My second.
Any discussion?
Good question.
Yep.
I know we did not go over them, but Steph did provide comments. Is it assumed that they, the applicant is able to provide new plans? So if, if that's the case, they would they could submit new plans before that meeting?
Yes, and
I just didn't know if we needed to add that provision in the motion.
Yes, we can provide them the review comments. And if they agree, they can make those changes. If they want to have it for discussion, they can have those discussions at the, at the next meeting on the March.
10 days, I put it as a March 1st for a material deadline?
Okay.
I also had, had one question. I'm not sure about this. When it comes to noticing a butters, I, I'm not sure if there are any butters possibly in Raymond that may, maybe, I, I'm not sure whether they, they would have automatically been noticed or, or not. So just a question.
Yeah, any direct abutter to the property should have been noticed. And then in the regional impact, we would, it's, it's really just adding other people that get certified information about notice of the meeting. But we will double check and make sure that the correct notices have gone out. Steph, I do believe that there was one that was not correct or has been updated. One of the butters, I thought I saw that on your review.
The only thing that I mentioned in my review was the town of Raymond itself. And they'll be notified as of the DRI determination anyways.
Okay, or Joanna, did you notice that there wasn't a correct abutter?
No, I think what you might be referring to is that the, the property owners' names have changed slightly. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay, that's, that's the Cabota Trust has been changed to Tammy DeFresco and
Oh, okay, so the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Not the butters. So those, we don't have to chase down any of those other butters from the butters list. Change those. Okay. So we're in the discussion phase of the motion to continue? Where we left off? All right. Any other discussion after the second? Then I'll take a, a vote for continuation. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton? Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So this meeting will be continued to the 10th. I do feel for the public that have stayed on for this meeting. It is a process that we have to, we're legally bound by. So appreciate you staying on. And you will not be individually noticed. For those that went out as a butter notices, they won't be noticed again. The continuance serves as the notice for the 10th. So.
I've got a couple of questions if I could ask about the regional impact. This is Scott Franco from New Hampshire Land Consultants, representing the application.
Okay, yes.
I, it's been a long time since I've done a regional impact. How would the, a butters will be noticed through this continuation, but how will they know when the meeting for regional impact meetings at say Epping and Raymond and Stratford County Regional Planning would occur?
Well, they may not hold regional meetings. So it may be that they'll actually just have a, the agency will provide comment to this board and not have their own individual public meeting.
But
That's typically what happens.
The last one, it's been years, but the last one, they actually had a meeting at the Rockham Planning Commission on the, on the one that may have changed that since our new world.
Yeah, well, and it's, on occasion, I think we, as the planning board, would request the SRPC as a, a butter or applicant to weigh in, not an applicant, but as, as a notification to weigh in on this. We're not asking them to do that at this point because we're really just looking at the butters, the, the town of butters. Steph, is that right? Or am I also, we also notifying the Regional Planning Commission?
Yeah, so then Regional Planning Commission needs to get notice. And where this is a Nottingham is in the Stratford region and then the butters are in the Rockingham region. I do need to look on that and see what, how exactly that Regional Impact Committee logistic will go. Typically, it's, it's one Regional Impact Committee meeting hosted by the Regional Planning Commission, but where it's two planning commissions, I have to look into that.
Okay. And those would then get posted and notified. Okay, so public, public notice would go out for those.
So there, there would be actual meetings at the planning commissions? Is that what you just said, Steph?
There will be a, a meeting, a hearing, yes.
And then at the two towns, Epping and Raymond, you're just looking for letters or comments back from those towns?
Correct, or attendance to the, attendance to the meeting is, they can do that as well.
Attendance to our meeting? Yeah.
So there's nothing that we have to do as the applicant representative? You guys will handle the notifications to the towns and the planning commissions?
The notice will be the applicant will have to pay for the notice. And then you'll have to be able to provide plans for the committee to review. Yep.
So what do we have to deliver to the town? I'm trying to get to, just know the process.
Yeah. Um, I can send you a, I don't have it up in front of me, but I can send you the information and we can go over it together if you'd like.
Okay.
And that document where, that those other six criteria, later on, it does show, talk about what, what the plan, what the land use board that made the determination, what we're required to do within like five days. And then I believe each individual planning commission has a document online as to what their processes that they've established for these. So it'll depend on who has jurisdiction on it. If it's Stratford Regional, because that's the one we belong to, or if it's Rockingham, because that's the one where the butters belong to. Or both.
This is Buzz. I, I want to point a clarification on the fact that Nottingham is actually in Rockingham County. So I understand that we use Stratford Planning, but wouldn't we automatically go under the Rockingham County meeting?
No, Steph, you might want to we, we are, we are members, Nottingham is a member of the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. We have a seat on the board as a commissioners, Gary's one, I'm the other. I don't know if we weren't invited to Rockingham and, and Stratford just adopted us or, or what happened, but we are in the county of Rockingham, but we are served by the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. That's probably not, doesn't clear anything up for you.
Not really, but.
So the regional planning commissions have nothing to do with the counties, except for the fact that they tend to share names and that causes confusion. It's a separate designation, Buzz.
Now that makes sense.
So also, Buzz, the one interesting fact is that we're, I, I can't tell you the other town, but one of two towns that are actually in physically in Rockingham County, but are part of Stratford Regional Planning. And I can't explain that whole thing either. Steph did a great job though.
All right, so
All right, one more, one more item, because I, I think there was a question as to whether a butters would be notified of the RIC meetings, the Regional Planning Commission meeting, and reading the bylaws of Stratford Regional Planning Commission for how they handle regional impact, their regional impact committee. It mentions, the procedure mentions notification to members of the RIC, notification to the SRPC commissioners, notification to the local land use board designee where the project is located, notification to a butter status municipalities, notification to the property owner and or applicant's agent and any other affected party as determined by SRPC staff. So that last one may mean a butters, but nowhere in there does it specifically state that a butters are notified. So you want to, I think we'll probably post it on our site if, if we're notified of it in time.
I did just see a question in the, the chat here is that can it be clarified that Raymond and Epping residents are allowed to attend and be heard at the next meeting? Anybody, anybody in the public is, can come to a public meeting in Nottingham. They don't have to be a Nottingham resident and provide comment. So it is open to anybody to make comment. Okay. That ends the discussion on this case. We'll move on to other items on our agenda. I appreciate the public and the applicant to stay the course and appreciate the future to being able to hear all of your input. Because it is important. All right, folks, let's move on to I guess, staff and board member updates. Just go to Joanna, do you have any updates?
Oh, I just realized I hadn't muted. Sorry. Um, no, I'm working from home right now, so bear with me as I try to navigate that new territory. But, um, other than that, no, no, no comments at this time.
Steph?
Um, no, no updates for me at this point.
Okay. Ed?
All right, muted.
Gary?
Thank you.
Just kidding. Go ahead, Ed.
No, I've got none. Thanks.
Sure, okay.
He'll, he'll come back to it.
Just one thing, I wasn't sure, and I did check with Kelly at the Selectman's Office, and maybe Tyler might know this answer, as to who, whether some of these notifications from Stratford Regional go to, say, our road agent. go to say our road agent and other folks in, in the town realm. So I'm not sure about that, but anyway, I was going to mention this, that there's an extension for granting from the Diesel Emissions Reduction Act. There's, this had been, happened in the past, was used up and now it's open again. So there's another 500,000 for replacement of motors or vehicles, older vehicles, diesel vehicles. And opens on, opened on February 8th and ends on March 8th. So wanted to make sure that there wasn't a need within Nottingham to maybe utilize that. And I was planning on forwarding that to probably Sean, the road agent. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. I know I said I was all set and I do this every time. I apologize. I do have a couple of things, just noticing. I think it's important, I don't know if we can turn this off during meetings, but I'm just noticing that there's a lot of, there's some items put in the chat feature and we have to make clear to people that that's not part of the public record. It doesn't become part of the public hearing. We don't weigh any of that that's in there at this point until the public hearing is, is fully opened. So I hope people that might have commented, don't think that that's their, that was the time appropriate for it. And then also to avoid cross conversations occurring between parties and Zoom. I don't know if there's a way to prevent that, if it's making people raise hands to chat or, or make it private.
We can shut the chat off as well.
The second, the second thing is I think one of the cases tonight was a good example of maybe at our next ZBA joint meeting that we hold, we we kind of get a better understanding for, for what the ZBA process is. Whether they look at a project in whole or they're just only specifically acting on the variance that is requested and are being very literal. Because I think it would be helpful if we knew that we could direct applicants correctly and then the ZBA can act on everything at once and then avoids the back and forth. And another concern I had recently was just reading the notices of decision to make sure that we're accurately applying special exceptions and conditional things, conditional permits and things of that nature. There should be a checklist that they go by for that and make sure that those are being granted appropriately versus variances. A couple of items to add for a future joint meeting. And that's it. Thank you.
Tyler?
We had a meeting on 28, 2021. And again, approved minutes and manifest town administrator gave his report. And then the big, one of the big things of the night was we had the New Hampshire DOT Anthony Weatherfield getting the 152 bridge. It's way overdue to, something to be done to it. Lot of discussion, had three options, how to handle, you know, when they do begin construction, maybe to close that section off, get it done quicker, which I guess doesn't sound like that could happen. Or a couple other ways to do it that would prolong the construction maybe a couple of years. So there'll be more discussion on that and the public input as well. And that was about it.
What bridge is that, Tyler?
The one down, 152 down past the school.
Got it.
That bridge there is in real, real bad shape. And if you see in the forum, they have a, the story on it actually today.
And that's for 2023 or 2024?
Ian?
Nothing for me.
Susan?
Um, yes, thank you. I just want to say that I misspoke at the last meeting that we have not one, but two openings on the Conservation Commission. We have five regular members and we have one alternate. Two of our five are over 70 and our alternate is also over 70. And of the three others, two members have families, young families. So they are really overextended. So I want to express an invitation to the community to join the Conservation Commission or join any other board to replace some of us that are getting old and feeble.
So you said two spots?
What?
Did you say two spots were available?
Yes, two openings for regular, regular members.
Okay.
There's only five regular members. And we have one alternate in this room for several more alternates. So appeal to the guile people, people that step up only when their neighborhood is getting impacted. We can only do so much. Thank you everybody for stepping up.
Sue, one question, are the Concom meetings currently by Zoom as well?
Yes, they are. They have been for a while.
This is a great time for all our boards and committees, because I think almost all of them are meeting by Zoom. So it's a great chance for people that are stuck in their homes to join a committee.
Oh, yes, and they're posted for access on the Zoom meetings.
Yeah.
Including the Trails Committee, which is still very active. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone to miss? Buzz, do you have anything?
All set.
Me, Anne?
Nope, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. And we've got two sets of minutes to go through. So that'd be January 13th, 2021, January 27th, 2021.
I previewed, reviewed both and I move that we approve the minutes of January 13th and January 27th, 2021.
Anybody second?
Second, Buzz.
Buzz?
You got it, Buzz.
Any discussion? Then I'll, we'll vote on it. Ed Veal?
Yes, but the only discussion was we pinned it the 13th minutes at the last meeting, just in case there was any changes you need to make for the legal response, but I think Joanna already clarified that she had taken care of that. So we're all set there.
Yes, yeah, I reviewed that and confirmed with Joanna this earlier. So yes.
Oh, sorry. The yes is my vote.
Tyler?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Buzz?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
All right, chair votes yes. Minutes are approved. We've come to the end of our agenda. Appreciates everybody's patience with this. We had got a lot of good work done today. Appreciate it.
Yes. Thank you.
I'm moved that we adjourned. It's Mr. Veal.
The chair seconds that.
Good for everybody.